And we're just troubleshooting a few tech things. We'll start in just a second.
Jennifer, if you could speak just so we can test for sound and make sure we have it at the volume.
Sure. Test, test. One, two, three.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we're ready to officially start. And with Brian out, Tina, you're on point.
Okay, let's go ahead and do, I'm going to call this to order at six of, is that four? Thank you. And let's do roll call and Carl.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Roger.
Here. Susan.
Yes, Susan, thank you.
Here.
And Jennifer.
Present.
Uh huh. Okay. Oh, and Brian? And Brian is absent. Is there a motion to excuse Brian?
Make a motion to excuse Brian.
I'll second.
He has not contacted the department to my knowledge. Has anybody else been contacted about why we would excuse him?
Oh, got it.
No, we'll check our email records just to double check for you.
Okay. So we probably won't excuse him because we have not heard why he's not here. Okay. Is there any guest business? Okay, Dawn. Oh, on our list. I'm sorry. And she is absent. Did we hear from Dawn?
No, we did not.
No.
Okay. Okay, now, guest business?
No guests online and no one present.
Okay. Let's approve the May 12 minutes to has, did everybody have a chance to read them? Are there any changes that anybody wants to make?
I had one minor correction under discussion items. The first paragraph, next steps to Cedarwood, just a typo. Last sentence conducts feasibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
I think there was also a typo, a minor correction. It's a comparison year to year. I think in the notes it says, and not going forward to add year to year comparisons, but I think it should say now going forward.
Yes, thank you. I will make that adjustment.
Any other? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes, approve them.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
It has been motions and accepted to approve the minutes. Everybody who wants to approve the minutes.
So you're looking for a motion and
I did. I got a motion.
Second.
I got a second.
Vote.
And what I forget what I say to vote.
All in favor.
All in. Oh, yes, that's right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, so discussion items. The first one on our list is introducing our new park board manner member Jennifer Goslin. Jennifer.
Thank you.
Is up there.
Welcome. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. And I'm very excited to be part of the park board and to meet all of you. I'm sorry I couldn't make it in person. I originally intended to be there in person, but I was recently exposed to multiple people who have COVID. So I didn't want to give that type of introduction to all of you. So a little bit about myself, my family and I moved to Lake Stevens about eight years ago. And my family includes my husband and two daughters and our two dogs. And we very much enjoy the bucolic aspects of the city. We appreciate the school system and it's really great to see the city growing and and getting better. And we're in the midst of all this, so it's very exciting. I have a background in ecology and conservation. I co-lead a small research center at the University of Washington. And there we provide our findings and online tools for adaptive management and in-season management of salmon and other natural resources like the river environment. So clearly I love nature and the outdoors and I have some experience working with various stakeholders as well. And I had been thinking recently that I'd like to be of service, not only in my work, but also where I live and to give back to the community. Thus I became interested in joining the park board. So as a member of the park board, I'll do my best to be supportive in this role to all of you and to echo ideas from the community, to add on to these ideas from the community, to contribute additional considerations and also to think at an individual level and at a systems level sort of approach too. I've learned so much already by just visiting the Parks and Recreation website and in meeting some of you already. I look forward to visiting each and every park in the city and learning more from all of you and getting a better idea of exactly where I can help contribute. Thank you.
Welcome. Wow, that's an amazing background and amazing ideas on what you would like to present. So I'm excited. And does anybody else have anything to say to Jennifer?
I'll say welcome and sorry for the snafu about getting you online.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for not sharing your potential COVID. We appreciate that. But hope to see you at the next meeting. Okay, here we go to the next one. The Parks Recreation and Open Space called the Prose Plan Update.
Yes, thank you. And I'm Jill. I'm the Parks Planning and Development Coordinator for the city. It's nice to meet you, Jennifer. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. On this particular item, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, as as some of you know, is the first Prose Plan that the city will be doing. We've long been doing long range planning, but we've been doing it through our comprehensive plan process. And our chapter is chapter five in the comprehensive plan. This Prose Plan will really take a deep dive and it will shape the efforts of the department over the next six to 10 years. We did hire a consultant to begin work on this. Our consultant is Conservation Techniques. And they have moved along quite quickly and they have sent out a survey. So they want it to be a statistically valid survey, so they've mailed 2,500 surveys out to homes. If you know anyone that's received one at home, encourage them to fill it out and return it. It's also open up to the public as well, and they've had some pretty good responses. I've I met with them last week and they said that it's cruising along. They're getting quite a bit of feedback, which they're excited for. And so that helps kind of shape the questions that they're going to be presenting at the open house. So you will see some boards on different topics and subjects and then some preliminary results. So we'll get so this is not the end of the survey until the 25th of July. But we can kind of get a temperature check of how it's going so far. They've also produced a real comprehensive map of the of the recreation spaces, all the parks within the city. They're going to be rolling that out as well at that open house. I encourage you folks to to come to that and encourage other people to come in from the community and give us some feedback. We're really hoping that we get good community response. That's how we can shape what comes next. So without that participation, we make our our assumptions based on our best management practices, but we really want to hear from the community of what they want and where they want it to go. So I would encourage you to encourage others to get involved and also to attend that open house on Thursday. And that's here at the mill. It's going to be in Hartford Hall. And it's from 6:30 to 8:00. There will not be a formal presentation. It's a drop in. Give us your comments. React to the boards. So the folks don't have to, it's not a huge time commitment, but it can be as lengthy as they they wish it to be. So show up anytime between 6:30 and 8:00 on Thursday.
Is there gonna be cookies?
There will be cookies, Carl.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. We would never go without saving for you. Yes, Roger.
How was the people, how was it determined that the people that got the surveys? And you know, I mean, is it that they just go from random or do they pick a certain segment of the population or?
Great question. Yeah, they wanted it evenly dispersed amongst different areas of the city, different. I don't know exactly what their metrics were. I know that there's income, gender, race. So they wanted a really good cross section of our community.
They did areas too, like
Correct. Yeah. So we have talked to a couple of folks that have reached out and said, I got one of your paper surveys, you know, should I do this or should I do it online? You know, either one is fine, but they really wanted to get folks that maybe hadn't been involved in the process in the past. So they have a a great way of being able to to do that. They have a proven record of being able to do that. That was one of the the areas that we really wanted to hone in on when we selected the consultant. So we're pretty excited to see what the surveys will bring us. Yeah. Tina, yeah.
When you say react to boards, are we going to have boards up like we have had in the past when we are looking at developing a park? Is that what it's going to look like?
There's going to be a board on recreation, a board on what what size park, where do you want your money to go? And then there's going to be an interaction of you being able to leave comments directly on the board. So as well as writing notes and then depositing those as well. So there will be about eight boards, I think there are, and they're different subjects from all different aspects of parks and recreation. So we want the public to tell us what size park, what type of recreation, what classes, where would you put your money, that kind of a thing.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's see.
Another question. Are we going to be involved as a parks board for this meeting or we just show up and just kind of mingle?
We'll be showing up. So so we want to get the public's input. This is the first opening up to let the public physically come in and see us on this particular subject. And then with that information, we will digest that and then put together the second presentation. And then they'll be also doing park board meetings to get your input as well. So right now we're just at the information gathering stage and we want to make sure that we have all of it. We have it organized. And so we can give you something to respond to as well and inform you. Yeah.
Do we need to worry about whether we'll have a quorum on Thursday?
We will. Yes. So what happens is if more than one of you are in the room together, please don't discuss anything related to parks together. So separate, go to different boards, different parts of the room. That'll guarantee that you never engage in a quorum. Now, two people can always talk, but the problem is if you have this conversation with two of you and then have the same conversation when you talk to the third or the fourth. So our recommendation is always to just kind of separate and try not to engage with each other. You can say hello. Just don't start talking about, oh, yeah, that new dog park would be a great idea or that pump truck or whatever the thing is.
Got it.
And then we also have an email out asking who would be, who would be coming so that we can properly notice the public if we think a quorum would come.
Right, because you have to
And if you know now, if you will be attending, you can let me know right now and then I can tally that up and get with our clerk to
Okay, I I hope to, I plan to.
Great. Ms. Jennifer, go ahead.
Thanks. I had another question in addition to first one about the surveys being sent out and it being evenly dispersed to different areas of the city, income, gender, race. I was wondering if there were some of those sort of sections where there weren't as many responses coming back or even enough responses in total, if there would be a second wave of surveys going out?
At this point, just due to the timeline of the project, we are, I don't know what the answer is specifically to how many.
I can answer that. This is what is called a statistically correct survey. What that means is we send out a specified number and those are directly mailed. And that is a batch that will stay all on its own regardless of the number completely responded to. That identical survey is also being pushed out to the public and is available to take now online. But the returned one by mail will stay in a completely separate group called a statistically correct one. And that way we can analyze the data separately. So in short, anybody and everybody can take the survey. We encourage that. Talk to every single person that you know that you run into. All of the meetings that you go to encourage participation. And then when you hear somebody has one mailed, highly encourage them to return that because that's the statistically correct version.
That's great and interesting. So would the consultant compare those two batches of results sort of as a whole? And then the separate one to see if there were major differences or pretty similar. Okay, great.
Yeah, that's correct. So there will be two different results based on the feedback from the from the mailed ones and versus the the ones online. So then we can have that information easily cross referenced. And so then we can say when these were mailed out to, you know, individuals evenly spaced throughout the city and whatever those demographics are, then we can come back and say, these are the answers for those. And then, you know, in broader public, you know, encouragement of this particular item. And I'm I may have misunderstood you. Were you asking if we would go back out to the areas that historically hadn't responded or or did I mishear that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think I sort of asked a double question. So yeah, if there were just stark differences that clearly some neighborhoods or some demographic was not being reached, then the results may be biased, but I can see the statistically aspect of the the ones that were mailed out versus at large that comparison that if there was some bias that it it would be detected. And I can understand as well in terms of timelines that you need to move forward to. So it's it seems like it's filled already. So thank you.
But that you actually bring up a really great point in that we can now identify the areas that haven't interacted as much and look at ways to engage them better. So yes, absolutely. We can go back out with this particular survey. You know, you know, I'm understanding that the timeframe is what it is. But that's something else that's really revealed through this process as well is that there are areas and what are our barriers to getting that communication from them? So thanks for bringing
Yeah, potentially some lessons learned for next time.
Yes. Tina.
So Jennifer, just so you know that that we do periodically go out and do surveys. And is it usually when we do update our our comprehension plan?
We do them for a variety of reasons. We do them specifically on or on site specific when we're doing our master plans or our planning documents for each park. And then we also go out to see what
The community.
Events want and what recreation is wanted and then also for our long range planning. Absolutely.
Yeah. So I just wanted you to know that that this survey isn't just because we're doing the Prose Plan, that it is something that the city does on a reoccurring basis. Okay, any other questions, Roger?
I'll be there.
Okay. Susan?
I'll be there.
Carl, you have any other questions?
No, not right now.
All right. Thank you, Jill, so much. Thank, I'm very excited to see the outcome of this. It's going to be pretty darn cool. I think so.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going on to the July Parks Department report and that is also Jill.
Thank you. We have a lot to to update you on. So the logs over at Catherine Creek, if you're wondering why there's a pile of logs over there, they came down in the bomb cyclone. And so they're going to be transported to a mill for processing. We have left a lot down for habitat, but there's just simply so much wood that came down. We were, we were surprised by that. The Cavalero Hill is going before City Council at tomorrow's meeting for the transfer of that. So we could potentially have another park within the city's service area. The Westlake Dog Park opened up to the public on June 25th and there were so many people there. We were thrilled and so much socialization between the humans as well. So it was, it was really nice to see. Roger made it out.
Just to tell the Parks Board that the signs were there and they were changed, what we talked about. You know, from the biting and all that was at the top of this instead of the bottom.
That's right. Nice. And new ADA accessible bench pads were added as well out there. Westlake Dog Park and Bayview Trailhead, the monument sign that will match the rest of the monument signs that are out in front of our other parks will be installed there soon. And staff has selected a design consultant for Cedarwood. So you'll be seeing a lot of that design information come your way. The repair at Sunset Beach, that's the abutment where there's a little bit of gap between the walkway and the abutment will be worked on this month, but we will have to close the park because there'll be heavy equipment operation in that site. Lundin concession and restroom bill, go ahead.
Water damage or high water?
It's scoured. So the the wave action had undermined the abutment and so it tilted. So we're going to have it reset. They're going to drive some pin piles and get it secured so it doesn't happen again. Yeah. Exactly. You bet. The Lundin concession and restroom building plumbing repairs were completed on July 4th. The fence was replaced at the south end of Davies Beach that I think it came down in a storm. Yeah.
Also the
Oh, the bomb cyclone. And so that got replaced last week. The city received $500,000 for planning the next phase of Bayview Trail in the state budget. So this is going to be from 8th Street. Currently the trail terminates at 12th. We already have the funding and the project will be moving forward soon for the next phase from 12th to 8th. And then we need to get our plans from 30% to 100% design for the next phase that will take it up to 204. So that will be coming. That's a planning effort. I'll bring you back some details on that when we have our first round from the consultant. The new parking notifications rolled out at North Cove Boat Launch, letting the public know where the trailer parking is. That's that's painted on every single one of the stalls that it applies to and that the penalty or violation for that is $100. The tax levy proposal has been placed on hold while feasibility is fully vetted. Two new hires started on July 1st. Isaiah Green was promoted from a seasonal worker to a full-time park maintenance worker. And Danny Suber was hired for the position of the Parks Maintenance Lead. The American Legion, I think at your joint meeting with City Council, the American Legion had come in to present that they would like to have the War Memorial altered. And so staff has been working with them. They've selected the emblems and we're going to be having a saw cutter come out to make the openings so they can be countersunk. So the openings will be larger than the current emblems that are in place. And so look for those changes, but the goal of that project has always been to finish by Veterans Day, but we think we're ahead of schedule on that. I know that's dicey to say out loud, but we're going to have it done before then. And then the last meeting, we were asked about year to year number comparison relating to our rentals. The numbers for 2023 and 2024 are down listed below. The event permits, there were 29 and 23 and there's 43 and 24. The mill rental was 181 and 23 and 173 and 24. And shelter rentals stayed about the same from year to year. We did have to put up trail signs for the new Bayview Trail. We took a look at commonly used trail rules that are consistent throughout the county and and those were posted on the Bayview Trail. And then upcoming for our events is going to be Lake Stevens Farmers Market. We'll continue on those Wednesdays until the end of August. And Movies in the Park are August 8th and August 22nd. Those are going to be held at Lundin Park along with Going a Viking on September 20th at 11:00 AM.
Boy, the farmer's market is really was full.
Yes.
I'm surprised that I didn't expect the first. That was just looked neat. That'd be
Yeah.
I watch them from binoculars.
Right. That's great.
Well, any other comments, concerns?
There are some pictures there in the packet of the dog park opening. And it went really well.
Wonderful. Good job.
Yeah.
Is that your dog, Jill?
What's that?
Is that your dog? Have we acquired the other dog park?
Well, Cavalero is going before the City Council tomorrow for their consideration. So we'll know more after their meeting tomorrow.
Is it going to cost us anything? Do we have to purchase it?
I believe that the donation agreement said $10 to transfer. The other costs were, we overlaid the easements onto a map, so had to pay a surveyor to complete that.
Yeah.
We anticipate that the council will sign the agreement tomorrow. However, as noted in your packet, the council over at Snohomish is out on break. And so they will be back in mid-August. And so we do expect a transfer date of late August to occur. Once we have both of those being signed, we are going to work on a ribbon cutting date and organize that. And so you will receive the invite once we officially know how we're handing it off. We still need to do meetings in the field and do the official handoff and we have checklists on both sides to help this go seamless. One of the things we will do to for the public is have a very large final banner on site to let them know we are transferring hands. As the public will just still use the park and not really know the difference other than the signs changing.
Thank you so much for making that happen.
Of course. Most of it is Jill pulling the weight.
I like the way you get, you showed us the signs that you've done, a little more stricter than the county had.
Was that the trail?
The dog park.
Oh, the dog park side. Okay.
Oh, the rules, the rules signs, yeah.
We we took a bunch of different samples to bring in.
It needs to be, it's periodically a clown or two. But you gotta, I had to do it once here a couple of weeks ago. I just went and told them. You had to calm the dog down because it was biting and stuff. Or get out. The gal got smart and said, I'll call 911 and they left. Anyway, we got the good strict rules.
Okay, any further questions or comments on the Parks Department report? All right, so I'm going to open it up to board member reports and Susan.
Nothing to report, but again, welcome, Jennifer.
Roger?
Yes, I saw the numbers for the the permits and the rentals. Does that change like at the end of summer? Do you drop the price down for that? Because it's, you know, summer's over and it's isn't like a low period in October, November. Like a lot of places would drop their prices down.
You are talking about a seasonal adjustment for pricing and currently we do not have seasonal adjustment pricing in place. No, we are the same price year round.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Roger? Carl?
Can't click anything right now.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you all for the warm, warm welcome. I plan to start visiting each and every park and I plan to start visiting each and every park and providing more feedback in future meetings. And looking through the pros plan in more detail. There's a lot of really interesting goals and sub-goals in there and I. Wanna familiarize myself more with that, so I'm excited about that too. Otherwise, nothing else to report and thanks again for the warm welcome.
All right, so I have four topics. And because it's been a while since I've been here. So. The first thing is that today I went and saw ten of our parks. And, um, I have a question about how the list of parks that we are. Looking at, how that list came about, because I saw some things that are on our website. That were not on the list and I saw something on the list that are not on our website. So I was just curious how that list got put together.
Well, what you see on the website are all parks owned and managed locations. Whereas the locations that the Parks Board has been asked to visit are the locations that we manage. So there are a number of HOA properties where parks, the government, the city, we own the land. However, the HOAs are in charge of the grass and everything up above. So they manage it from the daily operations and maintenance. Those are the locations we have not assigned to the Parks Board.
Okay, I think there was one that was on the website but not on our list. Would that make sense?
There were several on the website that were not on your list. Off the top of my head, I believe it would be a count of eleven, but I would have to.
Okay, so yeah, of what I saw today. Okay, so, um, just highlights of what, um. Some of my major concerns are and I just wanna clarify that. When I was in the Air Force, part of my job was to go and, um, do inspections on units. Or help get my unit ready for an inspection. And so I learned. To look at the very fine details. So I have a lot of fine details on here and I just want you to know that. I know you guys are doing fantastic. You're doing everything you should be doing. But I felt like I needed to give you my feedback on everything I saw. So just so you know. But I just wanna, um, just highlight. My number one thing I wanna do is get the play equipment at Frontier Heights. Replaced. And the reason is, is because when we, uh, when the HOA earned. Owned that land, the park was in pretty bad shape. And the play equipment was in pretty bad shape. Nobody used it. And then we got it and we made a commitment to that community, that neighborhood. And I think to the state for money to make sure that we give that community. Uh, an awesome park. And. We've had to do some juggling, I know it, as to what gets done. Now, and there's also money concerns and I, I totally understand that too. But this particular neighborhood is underserved and I don't mean just underserved. I, I can't think of how I wanna put, they, uh, they're not as affluent as, as other neighborhoods. And it's chock full of kids. Well, I went to Frontier Heights four times trying to get this done and. I never saw any child playing on, I never saw a child there. And I saw adults walking their dogs, but no children. And that's how it was when we got it. So. To me, um, getting that structure replaced is real important. And taking, doing something with the, uh, lawn. Because I wouldn't wanna put a, a, uh, blanket down and sit on that lawn. It's very clumpy and. And I know we have plans, I know that, but this is just what I would like to, I'd like. Frontier Heights to be prioritized. At Eagle Ridge, um. There, we, the ties, I think that's what they're called on the path. Is that what we call them? The steps, yeah, the steps. So I'm sure you're aware, but. They are desperately in need of fixing and the, I think I've been on the park board in nine years now and. And we have said that over and over that they need fixing. And again, I understand priorities, money, I really get that. Um, but when I went, some of them were sloped down, some of them were broken, um. The volunteers that were there Saturday, um, put new bark chips down and they went over the ties. And so that was just a, a safety issue because you could just slide right down because there wasn't, there's no grip. On them. And, um, so. That, that's my second most important thing because it's a safety issue and it's been a safety issue for a very long time. And, um.
To clarify, these are the steps leading down to the trail. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, the steps leading down to the trail, yes. And, um. Let's see, and at North Cove. My number one thing is to please fix the War Memorial. That, and I know that's been on your radar and I, I know, but. It's been on the radar since that was put up and. Its whole purpose is to honor those that served and sacrificed. And because it's, it's in the shape it is because of the materials we used and how it worked. Being a veteran, it doesn't feel like. Like the city cares about acknowledging the veterans. It just feels that way. When we don't put, um, effort and money into the War Memorial and I. I, I'm very happy that we're getting some bigger emblems, but there's all that stuff going down the walls and. It just doesn't look nice.
I do have, um, an, the American Legion and with, in conjunction with the War Memorial Foundation. Has opted not to do anything to the wall. They only want the, the emblems replaced.
They own it?
No, this, the city owns it, but to clarify, this was poured with concrete. And concrete does receive stress cracks. It was the full design. In order to fix this, we would have to fully tear it out and start over. And right now that is not on a six-year capital plan. Nor is it something the city is interested in pursuing in our twenty-year plan at this point. I appreciate your feedback. Um, the main reason that it looks like that is because the concrete is stained. And when we use a stain, we're unable to just paint over it. If we paint concrete, it will begin to look even worse. Um, so in all of our, our conversations right now, um, always we'll take your feedback and that's the purpose of the forms. We want every single thought that you guys are seeing in parks. That's why we want you to fill those out and turn them in. Um, but just so that you're, you're aware right now that has been reviewed, um, and due to several reasons.
And just so you're aware, I'm still gonna tell City Council. Because that's my, I'm passionate about that. And, um, so I'm just gonna say, it, it, it makes me sad that they don't wanna get it fixed and that it's not on the twenty-year plan, but, um.
So it's just, and you're, you're more than welcome to make the public comment, email them, show up at the meetings. But to be clear, they had us work with American Legion.
Yes.
And we have decided due to costs.
Yes.
That it's not something that we are in interest of spending the public dollars on.
I absolutely understand that. Absolutely understand that. I just wanna change their minds. Um, the fish that are on this, uh, the splash pad wall have already turned. Um, they're dirty and they don't look very good. And so I was wondering if they could be on the volunteer, on the list of projects for volunteers. To polish them up.
Uh, we can contact the Arts and Parks Foundation. They are theirs to maintain. So we put in requests to them.
Become the cities.
No, it, we have an ongoing MOU for maintenance of those items.
I did not know that.
Yes, um, the, the parks is in the city, um, we're always open to donations and park improvements. However, we can't continue to add to our.
Yes.
City tax dollars to maintain those donations. So we can certainly contact.
That's good to know. Okay, and, um, at Lundin, the basketball. Hoops, what are we, what are they called? The nets? The nets need replacing. And, and every, everything else is just little tiny stuff that, that, um. I'm not gonna take our time to go over, but I will hand those in. The second thing I have to talk about is how much, um, Jaclyn was patient with me and helpful. And trying to guide me through technology and it was very hard. And, um, she was just, Jaclyn, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being so patient. Because I couldn't, I, I was having a tough time articulating what I was looking for too. So, um. But we talked about the pros plan is, plan is gonna have a map. And so I, in the comprehension plan, the maps are broken out like by. Mini park, neighborhood, open space, things like that. And I understand it would be very hard to, um, put all of that on one map. But if we could. It would be so helpful. Because, um, for one. Trying to figure out where to find the neighborhood parks. I know where the city parks are. Um, it, it was challenging. It was very challenging. If I, and, uh, because I didn't know what, uh, area. Um, Sarah was very kind to put like north, northwest, but I still. Didn't know how, what, how to make a route where I wanted to go. And if I was a brand-new person to Lake Stevens. I would be hard-pressed to figure out where these things are unless it has something like. Well, some of these maps have major streets on them. And that is very, very helpful to have those, um, major streets highlighted. And, um, yeah, I guess they all, they all have it, but there was something that. That I wanted, well, I guess, yeah, I guess that's, that's, I guess they're there. So. Um, I would just like a map that. I could see even if there was just a dot for a neighborhood, if it just had the name on it. And Jaclyn found that map for me. But to find it, it wasn't very easy. And so it was a very, very, very challenging. And, and because I didn't understand the list of, of, um, parks we were. Looking at versus what was on the website, I was so confused. So I think, I think it's buried. And I hope the pros pan puts it on the website in a very prominent place so that a new person can go, oh, I need to go this direction on Lundin Parkway. Oh, I need to go this direction on twentieth, the major things. The, the, uh. Other thing I noticed about the website. And, and now I'm, I'm gonna go to my third topic, websites. And another disclaimer, I worked for IBM during Y two K. And my job was to figure out, um, the requirements from our client. On how to create e-commerce websites. It was at the very, very beginning of e-commerce websites. And so, um, which is, you know, taking money for something. And, um, but that means that I do have some experience in. What, uh, navigating a website. And the city's website is one of those things that I have never enjoyed. And it is something I'm want to bring up to the council because I, again, I know it's very expensive to either buy or build. Or lease, I, I know that. But one of the things I noticed for parks is that when you click on a park. And it opens up the page. The, um. The banner photo is not the park. You have to scroll down if you wanna see what the park looks like. Well, I wouldn't know that. And if I was a brand-new person, I would expect that whatever I see right up there is the park. That, uh, I'm looking for. And so. Even though the information's there, it was not intuitive to me to scroll down to find what it looks like. And. And it just didn't match. And then the, the other thing that was very hard is that. The map, I can look at the map on the computer, which is a, um, is it a Google? Overhead, you know?
You're talking about a GIS layer. Specifically, um, our custom web app. Not user-friendly. It's a limitation of the current programs that are used. And to answer the response about the website. The city is undertaking in the next one year a full website overhaul. It's already on the project list. It has to be brought into compliance with ADA and it is not currently there. So many of the things you're, you're talking about, this is why filling out those forms allow us to re respond. And, um, make sure that you're getting accurate information about what is or, or is not already.
Contact if I wanted to give more in-depth, um, what I'd like to see.
Parks at email address is always the correct answer. When you email the Parks at email address. It pings my phone seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. The first available staff answers it. So if I see it come through on the weekend and my staff is not in the office and it's urgent, I answer it. Otherwise, Jaclyn's the priority person to answer it. If she's on vacation or too backlog, we have the depth of the rest of the department to reply. And so that, that's always the best place.
Sometimes it's very difficult for me to describe something and I'd rather have a conversation face-to-face than. Is that okay?
You can also email me and say, I would like to set up, here's my availability. Can you find time? And then we can meet online. Um, we can, I can even send you a link where you can share your screen so then I can help walk you through it easier. Um, there's other options to do it, um, and so that we were on the same page and that we can make sense on stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, and we would love to have the one-on-one because my questions come up with what browser were you in? What device were you using? That makes all the difference when we're talking about technical things through the web.
That's right.
So that we can troubleshoot and really get to the root of it.
That's right, that's right.
That's great.
Then can you talk to me about the mill? A reservation website. Is that ours? Is that our website that we created?
That is Civic Rec. Civic Rec was the recreational software that the city chose before the Parks and Recreation Department was formed. It also has limitations and mobile-friendly is not one of them. Um, they are making several improvements and have announced that they have the mobile version coming, um, but due to several. Limitations that we are seeing as a department, we've already begun the discussion that we will need to replace it with a new software. If we don't see major reform coming out of it. Unfortunately, that. Likely will not be the budget year two thousand twenty-six, but would likely be pushed into two thousand twenty-seven.
Okay, one of my, um, requests would be that you have to, um. Create an account to make a reservation, makes lots of sense. There's nothing in that account. There's nothing that says what the reservation is, what did I pay? When is anything due? Nothing. And so it's just a, a, and, and this was from Dawn because Dawn. I wanted to make a change. I couldn't find anything on there that said how to make a change to the date. So I called Dawn. And, um, and she had, she's told me she had to do that manually. And. That seemed kinda silly because, you know, we want our technology to do little things like that so we don't have to bother. so we don't have to bother and we can free up our pupils. And so I just had a, again, a very frustrating time with that. And I like to think of myself being savvy technically, but, but maybe not intuitive. It's kind of like a filing system. You file something. And then I go look at your filing system and I go, huh, that's odd. And, but it's not to you. It makes sense to you. So that's part of what, what's hard about making a, a website, a e-commerce website. So Jaclyn, you wanted to tell me something.
Oh, I was gonna say, I can, they have transactions in there. It is a little difficult, but I can also show you on that when you log in. It'll show you all your information by setting up the account. It allows us to email your receipt and information that way. Shelters and some of the mill stuff can be done online, but mill specifically. For certain things, we have to do it and give you overriding if you're adding more to that day or anything like that, because we have to verify on the calendar to make sure everything doesn't overlay for the different rooms. So that one runs slightly different in what you can and can't do on your own for modification purposes.
Is that on the website?
To be honest, I can't tell you right off.
That says, if you need to change something, call Dawn.
There, there is a significant amount of information on the website. And what we run into is information fatigue.
Yeah, yeah.
People stop reading.
Yeah.
And we're limited to the number of characters that we can put on that website.
Yeah.
And so honestly, when you go through the process, there I think are up to F or G number of attachments.
Yeah, I know.
And it is what we have to provide. But I know that not everyone reads through it.
Yeah.
Every software that we ever get will have its limitations.
Absolutely.
Within a certain amount of days, reservations can be canceled, modified, date changed. But specifically with this mill, because it can be rented as a whole as well as parceled out, this software is not fully designed for that. And so what Jaclyn's talking about is when you book one room, we have to have buffers between this rental and the next rental. We have to have buffers between this room and that room. We have to block off certain rooms. If you have Hartford, it blocks the stack. And it's so many rules and it's so complicated that I don't know if we'll ever find a system that can automate all of that. And so things like if you're looking at a one-off shelter in the park, it's so easy because it's a full or a half day.
Yeah.
It's simple rules. You can't choose your own hour. So I hear your information, all of our emails that we put out, it has our direct email. It has our direct phone number. And 100%, we're, we're here to train people for the stuff that can be trainable. But we will likely never be able to find a system that does it all because databases, if anybody has experience with those, they're extremely complex. And you can't just go in and change the base way that they create.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, and remember, it's only me giving my nitpicky stuff that it's, it is not a criticism of the Parks Department or any, it's not a criticism, it even though it probably sounds like it, but it's, it's not, it's a, a, my, I had frustration. And if I had frustration, is somebody else having frustration? And I wanted to share what was frustrating me. And so the last thing I have is a report from the foundation. And I'm wondering if, so the foundation is, is doing, the Arts and Park Foundation is doing the music in the park this year. And I have some information that they asked me to pass on to you, Sarah, so I can do that after this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And then, and then, because it's about that.
And we, we talked to them two to three times, so.
Oh, I know you do. I know, I had, since, since they knew I was coming.
Okay.
Okay, there. Those were my four topics.
Perfect. The only thing that you brought up that we didn't have an opportunity to respond to was Frontier Heights. And I do see the Frontier Heights play equipment was not in our department report. It has officially been decided by City Seattle Lights that we cannot come to an agreement on the netted structure that is barred off.
Oh, no.
Due to safety of the public. It would never be an exception for anybody to be injured due to the power lines.
Yeah.
We're all in agreeance there.
Yeah, yeah.
What we're not able to agree upon is any amount of safe distance that that net structure would be able to be relocated to in the park and therefore it will be removed. So we will not be able to put another vertical structure under that big power line. And so just know that that is coming. We're looking to see if we have another park that's eligible for it to move over. But currently, we don't have any depreciated equipment in parks that we already manage. And so we are working through that process now. But understand that is upcoming, where that one at least will be rectified and the caution tape can be removed and returned to nature. And then the lawn is completely getting an overhaul with phase two.
I know.
Everything has to be ripped out when we put in the R tanks and the underground infrastructure. So we'll, we'll certainly be coming through to brush everything up and make sure the top layer is in good condition after construction begins. As an update there, it will be pushed out to public bid here in the next 30 days. Construction will begin this year.
Okay.
We have grant money expiring December 31st and we are pushing the project forward. So we will see movement very shortly on that one.
Nice. So I, yeah, in my brain, I was thinking we were just doing one part of the, the big lawn, not the whole thing. So
We'll end up with the, the viewing labyrinth and the athletic field, the synthetic athletic field, the sensory garden, more parking, and then the outdoor workout equipment.
Okay, but that's not all the grass, right?
So also the R tank, the holding tank underneath will replace a significant amount. And then you have to take into consideration the work area. So we will end up with very little percentage that they actually didn't touch. And it will be ours that we kind of polish once it's all done. It makes zero sense to polish it now.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're getting real close. By next spring, things should be looking really great out there.
Oh, that's great.
And the four pickleball courts. I did forget that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So just to clarify that I understood, we, we can't put something else in?
Not anything above six feet. Six feet is their requirement.
But, but if we wanted to put something else in there that's not six feet long, is to walk on things, you know, something?
Yeah, with, with the requirements from Seattle City Light, obviously, is that there's not, that they're not conductive. So that leaves wood, plastic, those types of things, and that nothing over six feet.
Okay, and so my point is, is that I think we need to make that a priority because of the commitment we made to that neighborhood. And so I'm really happy to hear that we're gonna start working on it this year. That makes me very happy. And I'm really hoping that we can come up with more things for the kids to do in the park. Because when we took it over, they had one little tiny equipment that was busted. And nobody played in the park. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Tina.
Yeah, and thank you for explaining things to me. That is very, very helpful.
I'm so glad that AI agrees with us there.
I don't know why I was on.
The reason they're not in the park playing.
Yeah. Okay, so now that we had our board member reports, I am willing to take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, it's been a motion and move to, it's been moved to adjourn the meeting. Everybody saying aye? Aye? Any opposed? Are you opposed?
No.
So you're aye. Aye?
A little slow.
Aye.
Move forward.
Okay, we're aying. All right, so the meeting is adjourned at 6:02. I mean, 7:02. Guys, have a good day.
You want us to show up for this thing on Thursday? I mean, you want us to stagger ourselves or?